I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Carson City Board of Supervisors. Today is Thursday, August 20th. It is 8:30 a.m. We are at 8:51 East Williams Street in the Sierra Room at the Community Center. I begin this meeting with a notice to the public. State of Nevada and Carson City are currently in a declared state of emergency in response to the global coronavirus pandemic. The public may provide public comment in advance of the meeting by written submission to the following email address, publiccomment@carson.org. For inclusion or reference in the minutes of the meeting, your public comment must include your full name and be submitted via email not later than 3:00 p.m. the day before the meeting. Members of the public who wish to provide live public comment may do so during the designated public comment periods only indicated on the agenda via telephonic appearance by dialing Please do not join by phone if you do not wish to make public comment. Now that we have that out of the way, Tamara, can we have a real call, please?
Supervisor Giomi?
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell?
Here.
Supervisor Barrett?
Here.
Mayor Protem Bonkowski?
Here.
Mayor Kroll?
Thank you.
Of course, present.
We are now on Agenda Item 3, invocation. Bruce Henderson with Church of Christ, would you please come up and lead us off today?
Dear God, this is one of those times I realize I don't know what to say. Sometimes the best prayer, Lord, because of everything that's going on in our world around us, might just be the word, "Help." We need your help, Father. With the virus, with disturbances around us, with the fires, Lord, we need your help in so many ways. We would ask special help, Father, for our first responders, for our school systems, Lord, for our teachers and students, for our healthcare workers. I would be remiss, Lord, not to spend just a moment to praise you. We don't realize what's going on around us, but we know we're out of control, so we give this to you and we praise your name. Bless this meeting this day and these people who are endeavoring to lead our city. We thank you and praise you in your precious and holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Bruce. And before you go, Bruce, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We are now on Agenda Item Number 5, our first public comment for the day. Desi, do we have anybody on the line for public comment?
I see no public comment, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir. Yes, go ahead, Lori.
I just wanted to ask city staff to please send a letter of condolence on behalf of this board to the City of Sparks for the loss of their mayor. Mr. Smith, thank you.
Thank you for that.
And we did get one item of public comment. I believe it was just one that included in late material.
And that was on Item 17B, I believe? Is that the one from Bepsi?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was going to attach that at the item since it's mailed in, emailed in. All right, we are on Agenda Item 6, for possible action approval of the minutes of July 16, 2020. Has everybody had a chance to review and read those? If so, then I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Board of Supervisors' meeting minutes for Thursday, July 16, 2020, with the corrections noted in the late material.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The vote is four to zero. We're now on Agenda Item 7, for possible action, adoption of the agenda. Nancy, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes.
Yep. Any of the supervisors have any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, then we will adopt the agenda as published. We're now on Agenda Item, or the Consent Agenda, consisting of Items 8, 9, and 10. Is there anyone that wanted to pull any items from the consent agenda? If not, then I would accept a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Vote is four to zero. We will move on to Agenda Item 12, for possible action, discussion and possible action regarding authorization for the Carson City Fire Department to apply for a grant in the amount of $147,290 from the Round 18 Southern Nevada Public Land Management Act through the Bureau of Land Management, Carson City West Side Hazardous Fuels Collection Project to fund the CCFD Trailer Dumpster Program for six years. Mr. Rubin, good morning.
Good morning, supervisors. Rod, if it's okay with you, can we talk about both grants at the same time, since they're sort of related?
Yes, that's fine. So we will be taking discussion on Items 12A and 12B.
All right, supervisor. So this is, the first grant is related to our trailer program, which you guys are probably familiar with. The Southern Nevada Public Land Management Act sells land down in southern Nevada, and the proceeds of those sales from federal lands is used for various land management projects throughout the state. So this particular grant, we originally applied for back in 2017, and under previous action, you'll see we were awarded $102,000 at that time. And that provides the dumpster program funding for the west side. The program itself is only limited to stuff along the Sierra Front Range, so unfortunately we can't use it over on the east side of town or Gonai Hill or things like that. It's only to the west side because of the federal restrictions on it to Forest Service lands. So it's been a very successful program. This would provide another round of funding for it. We've projected to, under the new round, 700 tons of vegetation that we would collect. Excuse me, last round was 700 tons, this round's 1,000 tons. And just last year, citywide alone, we collected 350 tons. So we collect a lot of vegetation. It gives folks the ability to do defensible space work on their properties, and one of the stumbling blocks to having folks do that is what do they do with the waste when they trim their trees and do all that stuff? So this provides trailers and dumpsters to their homes. They load them up, we take them and dispose them at the dump. So it, folks that don't have pickup trucks or trailers or things like that, it really gets rid of that impediment and helps them do that defensible space. So that's what the first grant is for. The second grant is the same Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act. We were funded about $2 million last time in 2016, and that particular project, we did 943 acres of fuels treatment on the west side. Again, same limitations, we're only limited to the west side where we can apply the funding. This particular round, we have 850 acres of area that we're going to treat. We primarily treat critical infrastructure this last round, and Rod can speak to any specifics. We did a lot of critical infrastructure around city water tanks, pump stations, things like that. We also did some shaded fuel break halos around the Timberline and Lakeview communities, which you remember were hit pretty hard during the waterfall fire. One of the things that we're intending to do on this next round is to try to connect some of those halos. So there's, you know, that area, Coombs Canyon, between Lakeview and Timberline, we're going to try to continue the fuel breaks between those two communities through that area and continue to improve the critical infrastructure protection that we've been doing. This grant, this round of this grant, I think, is $1.9 million again, and that funds our capital city hand crew, not directly, but the work that we do, we charge the federal government for that, and that indirectly pays for the hand crew. And that's a great resource for us to utilize when we have wildland fires in town. We get them out there, and that helps us free up some of the engines to be available to respond to the normal 911 calls. It also has allowed us over the years to fund Rod's position, which is Wildland Fuels Manager. So he goes out and does the defensible space inspections, meets with new homeowners, writes the fuels prescriptions for the different projects that we're doing, and oversees the hand crew and works with the contractors. A lot of the work that we do is, in addition to the hand work we do with the hand crew, we do, probably half of it is with mechanical equipment, does mastication, kind of shreds up the sagebrush and trees and removes the fuel that way. So those are the two grants, and we're before you today to ask permission to apply for them. We have to have everything in here in the next few weeks, which is why we needed to bring these up today.
Morning, Rod. Did you have anything to add to that?
I think you did a great job.
Great. Any questions from supervisors? We'll start with Stacy and then go over to Lori.
Dave, have you approached the biomass company to see about bringing the biomass to them? It's something we looked at in the past, but they wanted to charge for it, and I just wondered now if that has changed since they're getting so much biomass from waste management, if they would allow it to be brought there, to be used? Because I know the city does mulch it at the landfill, but I don't think they're doing anything with it except stacking it in piles, so. And it's not critical to my approval of this, I'm just curious.
Are you talking about Ben Loyelton? Is that the one you're referring to?
No, I'm, I can't think of the, full circle.
Craig Whit.
Yeah.
No, we haven't talked to him. I know, I'm not currently up on what he's doing with his business plan. I know he's had a lot of changes over the last couple of years with the business, and we haven't talked to him. We're, I know Bentley was doing some composting as well. Bentley Ranch, we haven't spoken to them either. Just because of the, it ends up being a transportation cost.
Right, increased. Thank you.
So I just want to clarify for the public, when you're looking at the map that was presented with both of them, and it lists the areas like Deer Run, Carson River, Sierra Vista, Gonai, I can't tell, are those hashtagged out so that those are not areas that are served, or they are? Because I'm sure your map has got more designation than our black and white, so I just would like you to let the public know which areas they can call for service.
Are you talking about this map here?
Sorry, my package, page 233. It's all listed with a whole bunch of, like that.
I think we're talking about the same document. So if you're looking at that map, the areas, there's labels just for various streets in town is what the labels are for. The areas that would be in the project, and Rod can speak more to this, are the highlighted yellow areas. Those are the different plots where we would potentially be treating.
We're black and white.
Ours are in black and white, that's why.
That's why we can't tell where we're having service, and so I thought maybe you could just kind of let the public know.
Sure.
It's the area, Kings Canyon.
Chief, you want to bring it up?
Rod, why don't you go ahead and talk that?
Okay. So it's online, too.
Okay. A colored map, thank you.
Go ahead, Lori.
Something we were talking about. We don't get the colors, sorry.
The Southern Nevada Public Land Management Act has constraints within the language that was passed by Congress, so it has to be used west of 395 or basically along the Carson Range, the Sierra Front. So although the trailer program that we run is citywide, this, what we're asking for this grant, it will fund everything on the west side, which is probably 75% of our trailer program is to the residents on the west side within the wildland urban interface.
May I follow up? So people on the east side can call for trailer service, it's just not going to be charged to the grant?
Correct.
Thank you for the clarification. I think that's good for the public.
Yeah, as long as the.
Because we have defensible space needs in many areas, and I want to encourage people to clear their own yards, if at all possible. Thank you.
One other thing to add on to that, if you, if the public is interested to see if where they live is eligible for any of the trailer programs, if you go to the city website and you look under the map link on the homepage, there's a tab when you go into the map program that says Wildland Urban Interface. If you activate that, there's a green line that kind of goes around the city core, so everything outside that is considered wildland urban interface area, and they would be eligible for the program. So things out, Pinion Hills, Deer Run, Gonai Hill, south end of town, everything, like Rod said, on the west side as well.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Nothing? Okay. All right, then we will bring Item 12A back to, for a motion.
I move to authorize Carson City Fire Department to apply for the grant.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The vote is four to zero, and now we will take a motion on 12B.
I'll move to authorize CCFD to apply for the grant associated with Item 12B.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Is my mic, my mic connected? Can you hear me? Okay. Great. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The vote is four to zero. We're now on Agenda Item 13A for possible action. Thank you, gentlemen. Discussion and possible action regarding the purchase of vaccinations for the Carson City Health and Human Services Department through jointer contracts from GlaxoSmithKline, Merrick Sharp Endome, and Sethany Pastor for a total amount not to exceed $319,974 for fiscal year 2021, and authorization for the purchasing and contracts administrator to extend the, oh, excuse me, Sanofi Pastor, Inc., jointer contract when it is renewed. Carol, you're going to start this off?
I think you read off everything, so thank you for that. I always have a tough time with that Sanofi, too. But no, Nikki's here to actually answer.
Nikki, go ahead.
The vaccine question.
For the record, Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services. So Supervisor Bonkowski, as you read the description here, what we're looking for is the approval to purchase various vaccines from these three vendors in an amount not to exceed $319,974. And we have the funds available to do that. These are for our, the vaccinations at the clinic and also our outreach programs. Because of COVID this year, we're not going to do any school-located events, but what we're going to do is do them as community outreach events and have them in areas that will be strategically placed to get those schoolchildren and their families vaccinated.
Go ahead, Stacy.
Nikki, just, I was thinking as I, because I know the flu season is coming up, and is there, and I don't know how your last few COVID drive-through testings have gone. Is it perhaps an idea to combine those two events? I mean, is there a possibility to do that? Maybe it might be an increased draw on both sides to not only offer the COVID testing, but to offer a flu vaccine at the same time.
Yes, that's what we're looking at. We're currently looking, the CDC is recommending not doing that, but, and the reason being, they said that they're not sure if someone has COVID, how it would react if they get the flu vaccination. But internally, we are discussing, we ask if people are sick that day anyway, and our, the way we look at it, it's, if we don't do that, it's a missed opportunity. So yes, we are looking at that, and then we'll also be looking at when the COVID vaccine comes out.
Yeah.
So we've got a lot of activity looking at this right now, and some, we had discussions just yesterday of what those events are, and so as soon as that all gets approved, we'll be getting all that information out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bonkowski. Give us the parameters of the, both the flu season, the time you will be vaccining and doing vaccinations, and when you will do it at the Health Department, and the parameters of all that.
So we're looking at starting into September, and throughout that, our, we're looking at events, September, October, and we'll vaccinate at the Health Department at the same time.
Particular days, times?
So our vaccination days are Thursdays. It's on a walk-in basis usually, but what we've done for back-to-school is we've been taking appointments to allow for that social distancing and not a large amount of people that are coming into the Health Department. We start at 8:30 in the morning, go till 11:30, and then 1:00 to 4:00, 4:30.
Thank you.
So Nikki, do you think that you'll have less people getting vaccines? And what is the shelf life of these vaccines? Do you see any issues? Or we're going to be throwing stuff away? That's really what I'm after.
So, no, we don't throw anything away. We have agreements with the company that we can send vaccine back, and we get credit for what we send back. What we're seeing right now, vaccinations overall have decreased. We're, I can't predict what's going to happen. I hope that individuals see the importance of getting the flu vaccine in the midst of the COVID pandemic.
That we can return. Okay. Thank you.
Nikki, the Sanofi contract ends 12/31, halfway through our fiscal year. If that contract is not extended, do you have the ability to balance your purchases and use the contract authority to make the purchases that you need before the end of the year? So that, can you control your inventory throughout that, just in case if the contract's not renewed?
Yes, so the, a large amount of the high-dose flu vaccine for seniors is purchased from that vendor, so that will be done well before December 31st.
Any additional questions? All right. Who would like to make a motion?
I move to approve the jointer contracts for the purchase of vaccinations and to authorize the purchasing and contracts administrator to extend the Sanofi, I should have skipped this one, the Sanofi Pastor, Inc. jointer contract if the underlying contract is renewed and the terms do not substantively change.
We have a motion and multiple seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The vote is four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now on Agenda Item 13B for possible action, discussion and possible action regarding the purchase of various components of hardware and software through jointer contracts with Insight Public Sector, Converge One, Inc., Dell, CDW Government LLC, Microsoft, SHI International Corporation, IP Solutions, and Juniper Networks for a total aggregate amount not to exceed $900,000 to be funded from various city accounts as approved in the fiscal year 2021 budget, and authorization for the purchasing and contracts administrator to extend the jointer contracts when they are renewed. All right, Carol and James. You going to start off, James?
I know, this is just the annual request for the IT, software, and hardware expenditures throughout the city.
Carol, could we have you either speak right into the mic or take the mask off?
We were just talking about volume control with these. This is just the annual request for the IT, software, and hardware requests for all citywide departments.
You have a presentation, James?
No presentation. Would you like me to give you a little bit of additional information?
Please.
Okay. Well, James Underwood, Chief Information Officer, for the record. Good morning, Mayor Protem, Mayor-elect, supervisors. So first off, I wanted to give you a little bit of background about last year. So last year, we had asked, IT had asked the board for $750,000 worth of jointer contracts. We did go over that with, in conjunction with consulting, purchasing, and contracts, and finance. When we went over that, this was due to expenses that were incurred to support the COVID-19 emergency. So I wanted to give you some background on, or some information on that and what that was comprised of. So we went over this amount by $151,000, $151,038.85. So of that, the breakdown is CDWG was $4,394.93. Converge One was $33,131.47. Dell was $89,324.45. SHI was $24,188. So these purchases included laptops, docs, monitors, an amount of $54,461.93. This was to support requests that we were getting for loner laptops for people working from home, or trying to distance, those types of things. Remote meetings and support, $39,488. So those are things like the Polycom unit to support our remote WebEx meetings here in the Board of Supervisors meetings in the Sierra Room, the WebEx licensing to support that. that and remote meetings for the city. Also, to support the tele-network environment, $53,641.56. And phones, $3,447.36. So, that was phones that IT actually loaned out, all of our department phones to support the COVID call center, and we used soft phones, so in order to replace those, we ordered some phones. So, we could have gone to different vendors for this, for these purchases, and not gone over the joiner amount. However, the vendors provide us certain benefits on the contracts, in terms of the terms in the contracts and pricing. So, we wanted to let you know about that so that you're aware, and this year, we're asking for $900,000 in anticipation of continued items from departments that we're purchasing under the CARES Act, et cetera. We think that will continue, and also adding on the Genetek contract for video management system. So, any questions about that?
Any questions for James? Yeah, go ahead.
So, and maybe it's not for James, or it's just a process, but when you're going to exceed the authority of a purchase order or an approval of a contract, what, what process is in place? Because I don't think it came back to us to increase them, so what process is in place?
Yeah, generally, it would come back to the board, you know, immediately upon noticing that they're gonna go over, obviously due to COVID and the emergency funds and this emergency state of declaration that was placed. I mean, the, you know, they, it kind of, I don't wanna say it exempts it, it doesn't, but when there are emergencies and true purchases to continue to conduct, you know, business, then it can be reported back to the board to basic, and so that's what we're doing now, is kind of bringing it back to let you know this was the overall outcome of, of the purchases for last fiscal year.
I guess what I'm actually getting down to is should we not have an action that approves or a process for emergency purchases during a declaration? I'm just suggesting we look at our fiscal policy to be able to potentially add in that the city manager can approve emergency purchases during a governor's declared, something.
Yeah.
Or that somehow the action should have come back to give you an approval so that if it's, anyway, if it's audited, you don't get a non-compliance process, so.
No, and that's what's stated in the current purchase, purchasing and contracts policy, is that if it, if it is an emergency, then it can be approved by either myself or the city manager, and then, and then brought back to the board as a reported item.
Okay, thank you.
And I will add, we did generate purchase orders that were reviewed and approved by purchasing administration and finance for each of the purchases over $5,000.
James, three of the joiner contracts expire before the end of the fiscal year?
Yes.
So, you can plan purchases around that in case they're not renewed?
We do have flexibility on most of our purchases. You know, the expiration dates are towards the end of the fiscal year, the ones that are there. We have two vendors in particular, Insight and CDW, that are very comparable in the products and pricing, so we can work with those vendors, time our purchases, most of them earlier if we need to. We have one vendor, SHI, that we don't currently have a workaround with, but, or four, we'll have to come up with something before that expires in April of next year.
And then the video management system that is proposed, are there additional contracts or costs that we can expect to come before us for that system other than just purchasing of the cameras?
Yes, so the VMS or Video Management System joiner contract is targeted to the software and hardware that would generally serve as the video recorder or the DVR portion of the, of a camera surveillance system. So, instead of sites buying individual standalone recorders, this would be a consolidation of the smaller projects, you know, we would still have dedicated, one same-brand system all tied together for larger projects. But the additional cost that we can expect would be for things like a network switch. The cameras are now, you know, over IP, so they require a switch to plug into. Cameras themselves, whether we buy whatever brand of camera that's suitable for the purpose or type, those would be additional expenses. Installation would be an additional expense as well, cabling. So, some of those projects could be handled, you know, if it's a smaller project, just based on a budget approval. Other projects, if they're larger, may have to come back to the board to, you know, to get a board approval because they'd be over $50,000.
So, do you have an idea, James, of what that dollar amount might be for those additional contracts? I mean, were you talking about $50,000 or $250,000 or?
Well, it depends on, on the, the job. I think most, we have about 12, a dozen or so outstanding requests for projects right now, and those, of those, I only know of one that I would think would be over, over $50,000. The jail in particular would probably be at least $200,000 for their cable installation, cameras, switches, maybe, maybe more than that, $250,000.
And then on the last page of our packet, you have lists of the fiscal year 20 projects and then a list of the fiscal year 21 projects, which shows that miscellaneous department requests in fiscal year 20 were $240,000, but this year, your request is only for $115,000, which is less than half. So, just wanna make sure that you're comfortable with that request. Obviously, the difference, if I'm looking at this correctly, is because of the COVID-related purchases from last year?
It is.
You're anticipating that we will not have that going forward?
So, I'm anticipating a balance there. I think that the amount of the COVID purchases from these vendors last year is more last year than it will be in this coming year. So, our request for that last year was $90,000, I believe. So, we've upped that by $25,000. If we should go over again, we'll certainly monitor that carefully this year and bring that back to the board for approval. I think that the, we were all a little bit surprised by the COVID emergency and sort of, we'll do a little bit better next time around.
Those COVID expenses, though, end up being reimbursed, correct? Through one of the many grants that we received?
Most of the, or I would say, a lot of the expenses are reimbursable. There are certain requirements. If you did have budgeted money for those things, I think there's some, you know, constraints there, but some of the $150,000 extra that we spent is reimbursable. Some of it, we actually reclaimed some of the equipment and then redeployed it back into our PC refresh program because we had loaned things out and brought them back. So, we, we won't be able to get the entire amount reimbursed.
Any additional questions? All right, then, somebody like to make a motion?
I move to approve the purchases as requested and authorize the purchasing and contracts administrator to extend the joiner contracts if the underlying contracts are renewed and the terms do not substantively change. Boy, it's a hard word to say.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The vote is four to zero, and we are now on Agenda Item 13C for possible action. Discuss, discussion and possible action regarding contract number 20300139, AV retrofit theater in Sierra Room with CCS Presentation Systems for not to exceed amount of $117,378.50. Carol.
Correct, so Carol Akers, purchasing and contracts. Yeah, this is the contract to have the theater retrofitted to hold the temporary public meetings over there, then address this room. Most of this will be covered under the CARES Act. Obviously, this is proposed with a few different options. So, that the $117,378.50 is the total if you choose all the options. The options include the lobby, adding a lobby monitor, and then also adding the desktop monitors for the board members and all committees.
I'd like to add a little bit to that. So, there's the three different options that are listed. The Sierra Room option in particular includes seven computers with touchscreens for the DAS, and I believe we're planning a nine-position DAS. So, we're, our thought there is that we would only ever need seven computers for the boards that we have, but we have, we would have two extra spares because, as you know, models change, and that would enable us to maintain a consistent look if one of them were to break. The Sierra Room option, that, the cost of that particular part of it, the, meaning the seven, sorry, there we go. The seven PCs with the touchscreens on the DAS would be $11,466 in the hardware costs and a little bit of the installation. The rest of the cost for that option, which is listed as $29,705, is for the microphones that are hardwired into the DAS, so we would have nine microphones. We would have, there was a new, a new card in the hardware in the back to support all of this, a new camera that we would install over my shoulder, my left shoulder, your right-hand side, and so that's the balance of that option. The other option was for the two, two monitors in the lobby so that we could have people who are waiting for meetings space out in the lobby, watch when it's, you know, their turn to come up, they can listen to the board meeting from the lobby, watch it, so on so forth, because there's a nice bit of space out there for that.
I guess I'll ask, answer Stephanie this. The, the $750,000 in item 18 that we have for all of this work, this is in that, correct?
Yes.
And, and it's the amount, the amount that's in that budget, that plan of expenditure is for both option one and two was in that number?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I did wanna add one more thing, so to give you a complete picture of what's required for this, for this project, there's, there was an attachment. There's $17,100 worth of cabling through our Conway Communications Cabling Vendor. That is for running fiber optic cabling and the cabling that's required to bring data to the theater for this, that we don't currently have. That's already underway, as we wanted to make sure that that was complete in time for us to get the board out of this room because we're concerned about contractors being, you know, committed and getting the time for the contractors to rebuild and remodel this room itself. So, we figured that it was a priority to get that going, and also the cabling vendors are getting very booked up as well. They've got a big job coming up, so we took an opportunity when they had some time available for that. We would also require $51,844 in networking equipment to add capacity to our network to take advantage of that fiber optic cabling that we're installing, and that would carry the video and audio from the theater to our system here so that we could record, broadcast, et cetera. And that would be purchased out of our joiner contract, which was the last item. And then there's seven PCs that we would need, so about $8,000 for that, for the DAS PCs. That would contribute to the cost of the DAS PCs, so that whole solution together is about $20,000 roughly, including the touchscreens, and then some miscellaneous cables, cabinets at, you know, $1,500 or so.
James, the infrastructure that we're putting in place will remain after, I mean, the plan is take these existing cameras, if I understand thing, take these cameras, move them, at least a portion of them into the theater to be able to move our meeting there while this room is remodeled, and then move those same cameras back, but the infrastructure will stay in place, correct? So that if at a point in time in the future, we wanted to add cameras to the community or to the theater, for, let's say, we knew we were gonna have a meeting that was gonna have 100 or 150 people at it, we could conceivably move the meeting to that space in the future. Is that a fair statement? I mean, not included in this amount of money, but.
Part of it is, I can clarify that for you, though. So, this project includes new cameras for the theater that would stay in place, and we would not remove any of the cameras in here. The distance between the back of the theater and the stage requires a different type of lens for that, and I believe we, we put in a different type of camera, too, that will perform better in the lighting that's available in the theater. So, we would, into the future, be able to hold the board meetings in either location that we want to at any time.
For this amount of money?
Yes.
Good, great.
Of course, we have to schedule with the theater and there, whatever events they have, but, but yes, this, this allows us to, into the future, hold board meetings in the theater, and then once this, this room is remodeled, we can hold them here as well.
Yeah, great, I like that, thank you.
Is there any ability to use that equipment for any of the art performances that are held in the theater?
You know, I would have to defer to Eric Klug, but my understanding is that they, they would be able to use that as well. There's, in, in this proposal is some new projector screens, so, you know, the projector screens that are in that, the theater right now are, are a little bit older, they're having trouble getting lamps for, for the, for the projectors at times. These are a laser-based projector, they have a 20,000-hour life roughly, which we probably will never, never use those, those up there, you know, no need for an extra bulb or anything like that. Those actually were put in because we believe that we needed, we need upgraded resolution to do the presentations, to, you know, be able to clearly see people on the WebEx meetings and things like that, that the existing projectors are not sufficient.
Okay, any additional questions? If not, I'd like some discussion on, on the options. Go ahead, Lori.
So, actually, I'll discuss something on that because I did have some meetings with staff because they were concerned that maybe one of the options would not qualify for CARES Act, but just on the record, we determined that it does qualify, and therefore, we could approve the entire $117,000 project and receive our CARES.
Yes, that's correct.
So, I'm comfortable with having the maximum capacity to help provide access to the public during these unprecedented times, I guess, but, so I'm comfortable with both options.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I am even more excited now that I heard from James that, I thought some stuff was moving over and back, and, and to hear that it's not, I think is great because it gives us a lot of flexibility, because. of flexibility because as we use this room and make it a little bit smaller to accommodate the committee members, it's important to be able to get the public into a larger space, and this does that by adding the TVs to the lobby and the ability for us to hold a meeting as necessary in the theater. So I think it's great. I love it.
John?
Thank you. I echo what Lori and Stacy have said. Truth of the matter is, because of what I used to do, this is money I'm happy to spend, and I'm happy that we're getting it from the feds to do this, and this goes farther into the future than hopefully this pandemic will require and will give us options. Public participation in government is sometimes apathetic and sometimes very vocal. We need it to be vocal when it needs to be vocal, and I commend the work that we're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Somebody like to make a motion?
Sure. I move to approve the contract with both option one and option two for not to exceed I'll get that 50 cents.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The vote is four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we are now on agenda item 13D for possible action. Discussion and possible action regarding a determination that Spanish Springs Construction, Inc. is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder pursuant to NRS Chapter 338 and to award contract 20300062 Flint Road Reconstruction Project to Spanish Springs Construction, Inc. for a total not to exceed amount of $433,888. Dan and Carol, who's going first?
Good morning, Board. Supervisor Bonkowski, I think you laid it out pretty well. Flint Road Reconstruction Project, it's full-depth reconstruction of Flint Road between Highway 50 and East Siding Road. As you can imagine, that road's taken quite a beating over the years with the heavy, you know, trucks and stuff that go up to the landfill. Just a couple items to note about this project. We are using a thicker pavement section than we normally see, and that's because of the heavy vehicles that we expect to see on that road, so it's a six-inch asphalt section. It is entirely funded by the Landfill CIP Fund, so there's no RTC funds that are going into reconstructing this road. I believe that's important to note. It'll be constructed in the fall. And another, a little bit abnormal thing with this project is we are doing all-night work with it, and that is so we can keep the landfill operating, we can keep the VNT. I know they're doing the bicycle on the railroad track event, so it'll be, the construction will be happy, and it'll be a full closure between 8:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., and then it'll be open for the day to be able to serve those different facilities up there. So that's a summary of the project.
Dan, a couple of questions. On the relative to night work, how do you get over the paving issue? Doesn't, don't you have to hit a certain temperature on paving, or is there some magical pavement now that we didn't have before?
Yeah, no, you do, and I think we felt comfortable with being able to do that with this job. They're going to get out there pretty quick and do it pretty quickly here, so you're absolutely right. The deeper in the season, you know, you can't do it, but we felt good about it.
And secondarily, are we stopping at East Gate Siding just because that's what you have the funds to do? I mean, because obviously, the road all the way in is a mess. Or is the rest of that getting done with the new fieldhouse or gatehouse and scales?
Yes, so there'll be, this will tie into the future. As far as to the landfill facility, this project will tie into the project you're speaking of, the new scale house and everything. That's pretty much completed with design and will be constructed next spring is when it looks like it, so it all kind of tie together with those two projects.
Yeah, anyone who thinks, I've been to the landfill twice in the last month, and anyone who thinks that wait doesn't damage roads, only needs to drive to the landfill and look at the inbound pavement quality and the outbound pavement quality, and it is a stark reality as to what wait does to roads. So, thanks.
Any other questions? Dan, would this have been a good project for the fiberglass additive to the asphalt that we did on Solomon from the high school?
You know, I think, and Derek can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're kind of experimenting with that project. I don't think we wanted to take it to a full scale until we can see how it does for a little while. Is that what you're talking about, the section there? So I think it's, we'll monitor that, and in the future, it might be a good candidate if we feel like that product is holding up and doing a good job.
Yeah, it just seems like this would be a really good stretch of road to try that on because of the items that Stacy was just talking about. Okay, there's no additional questions, and I'll bring this back to the board for a motion.
I got it. I move to award contract number 20300062 as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear you, Lori. Did you vote? Okay. Any opposed, say nay. The vote is four to zero. We're now on item 13E for possible action. Discussion and possible action regarding a determination that Gerhart &amp; Berry Construction, Inc. is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder pursuant to NRS Chapter 338 and to award contract 19300182 Production Well 3B Well House and Equipping Project to Gerhart &amp; Berry Construction, Inc. for a total not to exceed amount of $698,021.50. All right.
Thank you for that. Carol Akers purchasing in contracts. Yet this is to award Gerhart &amp; Berry Construction. Just to note that this one, we had received three bids. The apparent low was actually Simerson Construction, but because Gerhart &amp; Berry did have the bidder's preference and their bid was not 5% higher than the lowest bidder, then this, so therefore, it had to be awarded to Gerhart &amp; Berry. It's one of the, our NRS requirements. I don't know if anyone has any other questions about the contract itself.
Any questions? You have anything to add, Dan?
Yeah, I just, I can give a quick little summary on the project. As you'll remember, we did the well redrill, a previous capital project that was in front of the board probably six months ago. This is basically that second part to complete the project, put a wellhouse on top, do all the electrical connections, piping connections, to basically bring that well into our water system. It'll happen this fall, winter, the construction, it'll be operational and ready to go in time for the spring and summer demand. Well 3, very important well for us, for the city. Carol, pretty much the local preference there, bidder's preference, she covered, so that's really, really what I wanted to talk about on the project.
So I recognize that one of them's not the 5%, but still, our engineer's estimate was 430, so this is almost like 50% higher than estimated, and yet, you're indicating the budget's there, but isn't our budget track with our engineer's estimates? And what caused this to be substantially wrong? You like the same thing. What happened here?
No, good question. So, you know, we're not perfect in our estimating, I can tell you that. We're pretty good at our kind of bread and butter jobs as far as our roadway reconstruction piping jobs. This is a job that we really only do once every couple, you know, two to three years, where we might do a wellhouse, a building-type structure. So really, where we got thrown off with our engineer's estimate was in the electrical components, we took up a lot of that. But what we look at when we're talking about fair market value and accepting a bid is kind of that bid spread, and if you look at the three bids that we did receive on it, all of them are very close, so that tells us, you know, this seems like reasonable bids, they understand the contract documents. So we felt comfortable accepting the bid the way it was. In regards to the budget, yes, we have the money to do it. We'll have to pull away from some other water capital, although, if you'll remember, we've actually been, I don't even, I don't know if I should say it on the record because I don't want to jinx ourselves, but a lot of our recent water jobs, we've been very fortunate with our bids and been getting some really good pricing, so we do have a lot of those projects that are finishing up right now. That'll transfer back into that water capital fund, so I think overall, you know, we're looking pretty good there as far as being able to keep doing the projects that we plan to do in the future.
And then, I just want to make sure the aesthetics and things of this particular project, we don't have the same issues that we had with our last one, so the residents in the area.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Supervisor Begwell. Yeah, so I did want to cover that. There was a special use permit required. Through that process, there's the noticing. Public works went beyond that. We went out, hand-delivered letters to all the nearby residents along Winnie Lay that would be impacted. We had a site meeting, we've had multiple discussions, not only with the property owner who's giving us the easement, but also the surrounding residents. We've given them a landscaping plan, we've moved around trees strategically to help screen, and so I feel like we've addressed their concerns, and there's been a really good dialogue and communication there. So thank you for, I wanted to note that as well. Thank you.
Stacy?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to thank you for doing that extra outreach. I have heard from folks that it was appreciated, and I appreciate doing it. I think communicating with our residents is one of the smartest things we can do, and we're just so limited in the ways we do that, that sometimes just knocking on the door is the best way to do it. So I appreciate that you guys went out and did that. Relative to what Lori and Brad said about the overbid, I assume then by your statement, you're feeling that waiting until the spring or maybe the winter to rebid it isn't going to significantly reduce the cost because of that electrical component, correct?
That's how we felt, and just so the boards are aware, the building kind of contractor market right now fluctuates even more so than what you see, like the horizontal-type projects. So, yeah, we did feel that it would not be, you know, any more beneficial to wait.
And then, what happens with Well 3A and that building? I'm just curious.
Yes, so the building, we need, a lot of the piping and components of the existing building, we will need to help get the water from the new well into our system, so all of that will stay. The previous well will be abandoned properly there, but there was, unless you ripped down that whole building and built a whole new, bigger building to fit everything, it made a lot more, not aesthetically, I think it made more sense, but also from a financial impact, it made more sense.
There'll be two buildings.
Yes.
One will no longer house the well, it'll just house infrastructure to connect to the system.
Exactly.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Dan, since this was a redrill, as Stacy was just mentioning, how is Well 3B doing? Is it producing according to our estimates or exceeding capacity?
Yeah, good question. It's actually exceeding, I think, from our initial estimates that we thought based off our preliminary analysis. You know, they do some boring and drilling out there to kind of get a feel for it. It's about 30 to 40%, I think, believe, more quantity than what we were producing with the previous well, so that's a great sign there.
And any problems with the well, the new well?
Nope.
Great. All right, and just for the record, before someone makes a motion, the account numbers in the staff report and in the contract do not match. The correct number is 5203502, 507010, rather than 5203505. So with that correction on the record, I would accept a motion.
I move to award the contract as presented with the account 5203502.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The vote is unanimous. All right, we're moving on to item 14A for possible action. Discussion and possible action regarding Carson City Rightofway along South Carson Street from near the southerly right-of-way line of Appion Way to the southerly right-of-way line of Fairview Drive that is not currently planned to be used for roadway or related appurtenances. Appurtenances.
That's a good word today.
Yeah, you guys are stretching our vocabulary today. Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you, Supervisor Bonkowski. Dan Stuckey, Deputy Public Works Director for the record. So I think the, kind of the, I guess, the purpose of today, I know the boards wanted to kind of know what we're dealing with as far as surplus right-of-way along that corridor. There was discussions when we came forward with the South Carson Neighborhood Improvement District that the board would like to get a little more information on kind of what the decision points are with this corridor. We, staff level, obviously, Stephanie Hicks has been involved in this project for a while, Todd Reese, Deputy DA, has done a lot of research over the last couple of months on kind of what we're dealing with there, as well as myself. And so I think the purpose of today is to kind of walk you through, in your packet, you did have a memo that summarized kind of really high-level summary of the findings based off our preliminary research. There was also some exhibits with that packet. I will, with this PowerPoint, I will walk you through kind of the memo, really high-level summary there, I'll walk you through the exhibits, and then, you know, hopeful to get some policy direction from you at the end and have a good discussion. So with that, I'll go ahead and get started. I wasn't going to go over the history of how this came, I think everybody is very aware of that, including the public, but, you know, since this relinquishment of right-of-way from Indot to the city a couple of years ago, or I guess a year, year and a half ago, you know, we have, we now control that right-of-way, and obviously, are building a major project down there that's under construction. I wanted to kind of first start out about, talk about defining what is surplus? What are we considering surplus right-of-way? Because I think there's been some confusion. Are we giving up parts of the road that were used when it was a seven-lane highway? Are we giving up, you know, some of that area? So if we ever had to expand, you know, 40, 50, 100 years from now, we would be giving up that right-of-way. There is also a kind of question about how it related to, you know, potential knit improvements and who would fund and where that funding would go, so I kind of wanted to clarify that a little bit with this slide. So the picture there, the red lines, the bold red lines there, that's Carson City's right-of-way. The orange little polygons there, those are encroachments into our right-of-way that have previously, and that's what we consider surplus right-of-way. So as you can see, they're located, this is a picture of the seven-lane highway, they're located outside of, I call it the roadway prism, so outside the asphalt, the sidewalk, the curb and gutter improvements, they're not within that prism. They're also already being used by adjacent property owners for a variety of reasons, but primarily for landscaping or parking. This is, I believe, near Kuntz, and you can see some of the dealerships, you know, displaying vehicles that they want to sell, so definitely being used by those businesses already. I did want to talk the last two bullet points. So how will the project impact these surplus right-of-way areas? It won't impact them. The project is not touching them. I showed, hopefully you can see that, but that shows the new five-lane configuration, and you can see there's kind of a buffer, that landscape buffer, that separates the roadway from the multi-use path, as well as the multi-use path that run along that east side of the road. Those improvements are all within that seven-lane highway that is there today, soon not to be there. So I did want to define not altered by the project, and really where that, South Carson, the future, if, you know, as we move forward with that, obviously, it's not implemented yet, but where staff is proposing to use those knit assessments, it would go back to fund maintenance of the landscape buffer area that's created with this project. It's not funding landscaping that's already there today before the project or any maintenance on these surplus right-of-way areas. So it's important for me to define, kind of distinguish, the difference there. So, you know, again, I'm not, you know, Todd Reese, I think, prepared a pretty good memo that, you know, kind of broke everything down. Hopefully, you guys, you know, had a chance to review, we can discuss that, but I just wanted to run through, what are the options for the city? So there's basically four options of what we could do with that, what the city could do with that surplus right-of-way. Obviously, abandon it, it would revert back to the adjacent property owners. And before I kind of go through these, there's kind of strings attached to all these different things and further research that needs to be done, but, and I'll go through that, but these are the basic four options. Number two there, we could sell the property. Again, a lot of research that would need to be done with that, and we'll go through that. There's also an option to lease, and so with a lease, you convey, you know, exclusive possession of that property, you know, during an agreement term with the adjacent property owner there that's using that area. This has been used frequently in the past by Indot along that corridor, and the exhibit highlights those areas. I'll walk through those exhibits that were attached, but Indot did use that lease option when they had control of that right-of-way on quite a few of those surplus parcels. License is another option. This was used less frequently by Indot. It does not convey any interest, and we'll talk about this option, as this is kind of the option where we feel, at least in the interim condition, we think it might be smart to, you know, go forward and start licensing. go forward and start licensing these areas. So, we'll talk a little bit more about that. But, that's a summary of kind of our options that are in front of us. So, what did our preliminary research done? Tell us, sorry. Our options are largely dependent, and I think this is pretty obvious, but it's largely dependent on how indot acquired that right-of-way in the first place. And, you know, much of these acquisitions were happening during, you know, the early 1900s, mid 1900s, when they were planning on building that freeway. So, you can imagine things were a little different, documents were structured different, everything's a little, you have to dig a little deeper when you start going back that, to that, you know, era, I guess. But, essentially, there was, there was five different ways, purchase and fee or an easement. Also, was it donated? Was it dedicated? Was it acquired through eminent domain? So, those are all the different processes that indot could have used or used to acquire that right-of-way. So, what did the preliminary analysis reveal? And again, in Todd's memo, it breaks down a lot more than I'm showing here and we'd be happy to discuss further. Todd Reese is on, he should be on the line, listening to this and he can add input. But, the preliminary analysis, I mean, you know, Carson City acquired some property through easement and some in fee title. Primarily, it's through fee, in fee title, and I'll show you that on the exhibit, but there is some easement areas. Some property was donated, other property was purchased. And then, most of the property, this is important to know, most of the property is subject to deed restrictions and the term that it's, it needs to be used for highway use is the way it's defined in those deed restrictions.
Dan, I have a question about that. That, I don't know that it was explained in here, if it was, I, I was not smart enough to understand it. If, if, if most of it is subject to deed restrictions for highway use and it's presently being used for parking or for landscaping, how does that jive? It doesn't jive. So, am I, am I missing something? Is it, is, are the parcels that are outside of the roadway prism that are identified as deed restricted for highway use, so they're violating the deed restriction in a lot of cases?
Yeah, I'll let Todd chime in maybe on the legal, legalities of that. Todd, did you hear Supervisor Jomey?
I, I did hear Supervisor Jomey. And Supervisor Jomey, that's a great question. The, you're correct that as the deed, with the deed restrictions, it is restricted to highway use and a parking lot is clearly not a highway use. The people entitled to enforce the deed restrictions are the adjacent property owners. And so, while I don't believe that the city could construct a parking lot there because the city is subject to the deed restriction, the city can agree with the adjacent property owner to go ahead and, I believe what the staff is proposing is to license the use of that to the adjacent property owner. And, you know, as part of that, you know, they, they in effect would not be, in effect would not be enforcing the deed restriction.
So, as a, I mean, I, I guess, righteously, this opens up a bag of worms, but you would ideally like to go back and remove those deed restrictions and then license, but you feel that it is legally acceptable to license with the existing deed restrictions in place?
I feel, I think it would be acceptable, as long as we're licensing to the adjacent property owner, who is the property owner who has the right to enforce those restrictions.
So, in those instances, could an adjoining property owner? Let's say you get two property owners that are not as friendly as, say, you and I might be. Can one say that the other one is violating a deed restriction?
That's a good, that's a great question. I would have to research that a little bit more. My initial impression is that the adjacent property owner wouldn't have the right to enforce the deed restriction on somebody else's property.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you.
I would just note too that almost every property owner along South Carson Street is encroaching somehow, so.
Right. No, I know, yeah. The likelihood of it happening is not high.
For a property owner to try to enforce a deed restriction on an adjacent property owner would probably endanger.
Their own.
Their own use. And some of those properties down there, their only parking is in the indot right-of-way.
Right. No, I realize that it's kind of a mess, but I just couldn't get that right in my head where we kept talking about deed restrictions for highway use, yet everywhere is being used for non-highway use. So, thanks for the explanation. I just, thank you.
Supervisor Jomey, I certainly agree with you that the preferable method to do that would be to remove the deed restrictions. That carries its own difficulties. The license, the license approach is a kind of a medium between the two.
So, potentially, the way I, I think about licensing though, is the city is reserving all of its rights, which would include the opportunity to use highway use in the future. So, I kind of look at it as we are maintaining it for future use for highway use. And so, I kind of like the license way because I think it's the most defensible of everything that we're doing to comply as best as possible.
John?
Yeah, given that, somebody provide for me the idea on the licensing timeframes, et cetera, et cetera, how you change it if you did get 60 years down the road and needed to.
Yeah, so my understanding, I think, you know, a license would just have a term and there it could be language in there. I'm sure, you know, this is, I think, kind of the next step is we would develop a template that we would bring. And I wasn't going to talk about this until the end, but staff would develop some sort of, if this is the direction of the board, staff would develop a template for a license agreement. We would come back to the board and it would spell out those types of things that you're talking about to give us that flexibility down the road to get out and do whatever we would need to do with that land.
Secondarily, if I understood your presentation, I think I did. I'm a little like Stacy. Sometimes I get confused about the legal language, et cetera. When you talked about if we needed to return, it appears that we're, the right-of-way is, as we've been talking, wider than the highway, and now we're narrowing the highway slightly. In terms of 80,000 estimated build-out, has anybody done studies to see what, whether, say, the traffic might go back up to the level it was before the state turned it over to us and, and the freeway came through to Fairview, et cetera, and south of there? What would the, does anybody have an estimate of what the traffic counts could go back up to and whether we would ever have to do what you were talking about if we build out to 80,000 and then sort of quit?
Yeah, no, good question. So, our transportation group does do projections in their transportation plan. Typically, it goes out, like they just updated with a 2050, 2050 model, so 30 years out. And that's typically as far as you go out for that type of planning, but that corridor is analyzed with five lanes based off that. I'm not sure, it's based off trip generation, those things and trips. So, I'm not sure what that means on a, how that equates to like a population, I guess. But, we do do that forecast in 2050, and the 2050 forecast shows that, you know, it meets our level of service standards along that stretch. So, you know, as far as ultimate build-out 100 years from now, I don't think we're looking at that. But also, you know, obviously, transportation could change very much 100 years from now as well. So.
The 2050 report does have a population growth component and it also takes into account changes in types of vehicles, number of vehicles, change in number of people per household. So, it tries to look at all that, but obviously, as we've seen over the last 10 years, right, that doesn't really mean anything.
And thank you, Brad. You've done a great job of laying concerns, at least among some of the public, by your comparison to Williams Street with the new configuration down there. But, I'm just concerned about the long-term, but it, from your presentation, looks to me, to me like if we had to go the other direction, we still could.
Yeah, and I mean, kind of back to this figure, you see, that's the seven lanes and you still have all of that area beyond that.
That's the one that I wanted to call back up because the key to me is unaltered-by-South Carson Streets project improvements in terms of the right-of-way. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And that was referring to those surplus areas that we're not touching. You know, we're not going to go and expand into their parking lot.
Well, and the point that John is bringing up is if you go back to the options that we have to, right, abandon, sell, lease or license, the first two would not accomplish what John's concern is, where the last two would. However, because some of the parcels that we have control of, we have control through an easement and we don't own and feed the underlying ground, we wouldn't be able to lease those, which then leaves the last option, which is the licensing.
Thank you Supervisor Bonkowski. Well said.
Any other questions?
Well, and the other, again, for the public, if we select the licensing method, it works for all of the properties. We could do one template and we would have a consistency of treatment for all land, adjacent landowners. And that really appeals to me too, is that staff will work on one project and all, everyone will be treated equally. And so, the research is, I don't want to say completely eliminated, but it's greatly reduced and it's a nice, solid legal document that memorializes everyone's rights, but the city retains ownership for anything we don't know, right? And we're setting it up proper for the boards in the future to have more ability to respond than less. So, I really like the licensing.
No, excellent point. And I think it makes it easier at staff level too, when you have a standardized template that you can consistently use. So.
And that's why I asked a question about the licensing and I'll be very interested, or future board might, to see that template when it comes forward because you really have to, you know, we've seen problems with contracts that previous boards have done, not that they're at fault, but that have come back to haunt the city. So, do a lot of good work on that. I know you will.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right, so, staff has asked for direction. And so, if somebody would like to make a motion and include direction on which option our preference is?
Yeah, I can do it. We'll see how it goes. I move to direct staff to manage surplus right-of-way along South Carson Street by focusing on the licensing option for the surplus properties.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The vote is 4-0 to approve with focus on the licensing.
Can I just say thanks to Dan and, and Dan? This was, I know it was a lot of work and it was interesting to read. I'm sure the history of it was pretty interesting to research.
Yeah, I would include Stephanie in that as well.
All of you, yes, Stephanie.
Stephanie did a lot of research.
Very much.
All right. Thank you all. At this time, I think we will take a seven-minute recess and we will re-adjourn at 11 o'clock. Is that 10 o'clock or 11? 10 o'clock.
Re-adjourn.
Re-convene. Re-convene at 10 o'clock.
I like that. Come back at 10 and we'll re-adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, John.
Appreciate it. Not long ago, early this year, I can attest that I had been back and forth on this issue at our retreat. I won't use the "our" word, so I'll talk about streets. The situation with the previous pledge we got on a similar project which has been cited, and this project, isn't perfect, but I think it moves us in a direction that I can live with. As we all know, we have a huge problem, and I've been sort of a bear in the saddle over this during my tenure as a member of the Board of Supervisors. But I do think it moves us to a place where we can get a little something towards the residential streets and the problem we have in this community in that regard. We do a good job on our arterios. We do a good job on the project we're doing right now. We've done a good job downtown. And we just don't have enough money. So I just want to say I support this because while it's not perfect, you can't let the good fall in the quest for being perfect, and there is just no money. So with that said, I want to thank everybody here for understanding why I've been a bear under the saddle. As the mayor pro tem said to me once in the parking lot, "You know, nobody disagrees with you, John." And I appreciate that. And it's just a really big problem that we'd like to solve. And so I thank the developers for coming in with this thing. And I would ask if this is something the board can carry forward, although I won't be here, because it does set a precedent to do something regarding the streets as we go forward.
Thank you, John. Any further comments? Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The vote is four zero to approve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Build a good project.
Do you need a minute to set up, Hope? Okay. We're now on Agenda Item 15B for possible action. Discussion of possible action regarding an update from Tahoe Western Asphalt regarding odor mitigation efforts and modification of its Nevada Department of Environmental Protection permit associated with an asphalt plant and aggregate crushing facility known as Tahoe Western Asphalt Zone, general industrial located at 8013 Highway 50 East, assessors parcel number 008611-35. Hope?
Thank you. Can we confirm TWA's representative Jeremy Clark is in the room?
Yes, Jeremy Clark is here. Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Protem Bronkowski and Board of Supervisors.
Good morning.
Thank you, Jeremy. I'm just going to make some introductory comments, and then I'm sure the supervisors will turn it over to you. At the meeting of June 4, 2020, the Board of Supervisors considered an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision regarding a special use permit. This was relative to six specific items. In considering the request, the board removed a requirement that odors not detectable beyond the property line. Well, they addressed that. That was one of the appeals, was regarding detecting odors at the property line. The board added to that requirement, a requirement that the applicant provide an update of the NDEP permit at the August 20th board meeting. We included the minutes of the June 4 meeting, page 17 of those minutes. I'll just read it to you. It's at the top of the page. It says, "Mr. Clark clarified for Mayor Kroll that TWA had, quote, '90 days to submit to NDEP our revised air quality permit application, which is going to include plans to address air quality and odor complaints,' end quote." So based, I believe it was based primarily on that statement, that the Board of Supervisors added that they wanted an update on this NDE permit, as well as removed a requirement that the Planning Commission had put in place, that upon three violations, the item would go back, the special use permit would go back to the Planning Commission. Staff has verified with NDEP staff that an application for a modification to the NDEP permit has been submitted. Staff has also verified that the reason the modification was necessary was because TWA was utilizing equipment inconsistent with their permit. NDEP staff has verified that the modification request of the NDEP permit seeks to permit the equipment that is currently in place and has been in place. It does not include new equipment, including, it does not include any equipment to mitigate odors. Again, Jeremy Clark is representing TWA, and he is in the room. Staff is not suggesting any action on this item, as this item is being brought forward at your request from the June meeting for an update. Thank you.
So at this time, Jeremy, what we would like you to do is give us a presentation or an update on the NDEP permit, the modification to the permit, a description of the current equipment versus the equipment that was proposed to mitigate odor. So if you can just give us a complete update, and then we may have questions for you.
Certainly. Thank you to the board. TWA did submit their application on time for modification to encompass the equipment that they have been using. The modifications to the equipment were primarily made within the equipment that is already on site, and that includes updates to the filtering system within the baghouse. So with respect, you know, Ms. Sullivan is incorrect when she states that no modifications were made to control odor issues or odor mitigation. The TWA has taken active steps to mitigate the odors and is continuing to work with NDEP on their reporting requirements, odor mitigation, and things of those natures. So specifically, I'm aware that TWA replaced the filters in the baghouse with updated filters which have had positive effect on odors, perceived odors leaving the property.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open it up for questions from the supervisors. You want to start, Lori?
So, good morning. Can you talk to me, how did you measure that the filter change in the baghouse has improved the air quality and restricted, as your words were, perceived odor? What mechanism did you utilize for that?
My understanding is that the NDEP is continuing to conduct nasal ranger air quality tests, and that TWA has not been found in violation of any odor or air quality guidelines that the NDEP uses. So based on that information, the updated filters, we don't have scientific evidence, other than the lack of air quality violations coming from the NDEP.
Do we have elimination of complaints from the public with our code enforcement that backs up the claim there?
My understanding is, in the month of August to date, we've had a single complaint, so that would represent a reduction. Secondly, I'll just read to you my email to NDEP, which I sent on August 4. I said, "Also, my understanding is the revision requirement is because the equipment is currently being utilized is not consistent with the equipment specified in the NDEP permit. So they need to amend the permit to reflect the existing equipment." Can you confirm my understanding is correct? And Ashley Taylor, an engineer who's a supervisor at NDEP Bureau of Air Pollution Quality, she verified that to be the case. So it is true that our complaints for August have definitely, we're at one, and we're well into August. So it may be that the changing of these filters is a positive move, which is great. That's the, I can also mention that I know NDEP staff is primarily working from home and doing very little field work. But if the filter changeout's working, that's a real positive.
And Jeremy, you may not know the answer, but how often in the schedule, or if we can get the information on the maintenance requirement of those filters, is that an annual filter change? What I want to do is make sure we're not going to slip backwards because they don't update the filter. If you get a fire in the flume or anything like that, it can burn the baghouse up, the filters. I'd just like to see, is that part of the NDEP portion that they are going to monitor, some stuff like that? I'd be interested in seeing the ongoing maintenance of that filter.
Yes, ma'am. I do not have information in front of me regarding the maintenance requirements of the filters within the baghouse. I can certainly get that information and supplement that to Ms. Sullivan and the board, if you would like. But, you know, in the event, maintenance was not conducted on the filters within the baghouse, I'm sure that Carson City Code Enforcement and the NDEP would receive an uptick in complaints, and it would be addressed.
My objective is to not get the complaints, and that you would just do the maintenance. That's our, that's what we're after here, is to solve this problem for the residents, and actually for the company also, right? If you do regular maintenance and keep up with the standards that are attached to those filters, they usually have useful lives, whatever that answer is. I don't want to see the residents endangered, or having them come before us again, and then we're coming back to you. So if you can, please let us know the maintenance schedule and what's attached, and thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That was just going to be my comment relative to the filters. If you're using complaints to determine when to change a filter, then that's a major fail. So your comment relative to that is not good. I don't know if Hope knows this. When NDEP does their inspections or their permitting, do they look at maintenance of the equipment as part of that examination so that it's being observed by someone other than just TWA? Do you know if they do that?
Here's what I do know. And Jeremy, you probably have more knowledge of this than I do, but there is an outstanding NDEP violation due to a lack of record keeping, or adequate record keeping. And I know that that's a violation that's been stated by NDEP, and I believe TWA is responding to it. Now, whether or not the required record keeping that NDEP is looking at, you know, drills down to the, you know, required filter changeouts, I can't speak to that. But I can speak to the fact that NDEP has observed that the record keeping on site is not consistent with their requirements.
Okay. Well, I assume that, I mean, we don't need to address that here, because obviously NDEP will. But, you know, for my two cents, if the filters are what has caused a decrease in the odor, then I would think, as Lori said, that TWA would, I mean, if the requirement from the manufacturers to change them once a month, I think I'd change them twice a month. I mean, it just seems that important to me. But I'll leave it to you to determine that. But I guess I just want to reiterate what Lori said. If the complaints are what they're using to determine when the filters are being changed, then that is not acceptable.
Supervisor, Jeremy, if I may respond to your comment. No, TWA is not using the complaints to respond, or as a guide of when to provide maintenance to their plant. They are going by the manufacturer's guidelines with respect to changing out and cleaning filters. My intent in making that comment was certainly not to suggest that they would be using the complaints to help guide their maintenance procedures. They are doing constant maintenance as the plant is required pursuant to the manufacturer guidelines, which has led to a decrease in the complaints. And certainly, they, I agree with you, vigilance is key with respect to maintenance, and probably doing extra maintenance to make sure that the filters are properly doing their job. But no, I just want to correct the perception that TWA would be somehow using complaints to guide their maintenance, which is absolutely not the case.
John, do you have questions? John?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to give Ms. Sullivan a chance to, if she needs to elaborate on what she said. It sounded like she was answering Jeremy's assertion that she wasn't accurate. It sounds to me like you may have covered that, but do you feel the necessity to have any other rebuttal?
No, I don't. I think if they've changed the filters and we're getting a positive result, that's what we want. We want them to operate successfully and in compliance with NDEP and with our special use permit findings, and for the residents to be able to enjoy their homes.
Thank you.
So just as a thought, when this goes back before the Planning Commission, we may wish to consider a condition on their special use permit that deals with the submission of the maintenance records on the filter. It may cause the owners to validate and make sure they're keeping up with it, and they would just submit the manufacturer of it, which we can then get the suggested schedule from the manufacturer, and then we can validate their records that they're complying with, at least the manufacturer's specifications for changing the filters. They can be more aggressive, as he's indicated, if they want to clean or do it more often, but potentially, we can make sure they're at least doing it pursuant to the manufacturer's specifications, because I really want those residents to feel assured that we take this seriously, and that their health is of utmost importance.
Jeremy, what led to the decision to not install the new proposed equipment under the NDOT permit?
That, the new equipment that we were specifically looking at was a blue smoke filter, which would actually take the smoke coming out of the stack and filter it back into the baghouse, where it would then be burned up, and then subsequently dispersed without any odor at all. TWA submitted preliminary ideas and plans to NDEP and never heard back from them at all. So we haven't, we haven't been able to move forward down that path, and that is a significant investment on behalf of TWA. So without any guidance whatsoever as to whether that would be acceptable or not, they couldn't make that kind of investment really on a whim without even the NDEP saying, "You know what? Conceivably, that's a good idea. Let's model that. Let's find out how that would have an impact on air quality, perceived odors, and your plant." And that may be due to COVID, but we submitted several, a couple different ideas to NDEP without hearing back from them.
So if I understand you correctly, if they did respond with an approval of that design for the new equipment, would TWA then move forward with it?
So my understanding is that NDEP could not, will not give an approval based on a concept, without being able to model that concept through their various computer programs, which can give them an idea as to how that will affect air quality. So we weren't looking for approval. We were looking to work with them conceptually on the blue smoke filter, or, I forget the term, pardon me, but it's a blue smoke filter that will redirect the smoke back into the baghouse. And it's been used across the United States in various asphalt, hot asphalt plants. So we still feel like that's a viable option, but we're not getting feedback from the NDEP. So if the NDEP, to respond more specifically to your question, you know, said to TWA, you know, "That looks like a good idea. Let's explore that further. Can you get us the specs, and then we can run it through our modeling?" That is something that we would continue to pursue to eliminate issues moving forward.
Thank you. Hope, can you run us through the remaining timeline now for future meetings and approvals?
Yes. NDEP does have 10 days to deem the application complete. My understanding is the application was submitted on Monday. So we have about another week before they need to deem it complete. They then have, I believe, 70 days to modify the permit. So that's NDEP's track. For us, we go back in October to the Planning Commission for the one-year review of the special use permit.
Just another thought or something, because how long of a period is the special use permit reviewed each, how many years do we give them before it comes back again?
We make it a condition of approval. So we've had it come back, I think it came back last October, I believe. And then when the commission approved it this last time, they said, "We want to see it again next year."
So just as a potential another thought, NDEP hasn't been really running a bunch of air quality tests and things. They come out on a, maybe a compliance check. Could we also consider that they have to pay for two random tests of air quality with a professional, and the results is directly sent to the city? The results don't go to them? You know, that the city would, they give us the contractor, they pay for it, and we'd call up and say, "Give me a test Tuesday at," whatever that they arrange, and we get the results to validate compliance, that the filters are working? That, it's just, again, ways in which we can assure ourselves, especially if they're not going to change out the equipment, that the filter is actually performing and meeting the needs, and then, and just do that for the one year, just have two random tests or something. Just, I'm thinking outside of the box on what we can do, since NDEP is only going to check it, anyway, once.
So are you suggesting that they test for air quality or odor?
I think we could do both. I mean, the whole, the objective is not to harm the people, and it was, the odor is so obnoxious. So I think we could work out that it's tested twice a year, especially just for that one year, to find out if their filter change is effective. Just a thought.
If I may, when we look at our findings for the special use permit, the findings specifically call out odors. Air quality is really the domain of the state in NDEP. So I think your points are really good points, and I'm happy to go back to NDEP and ask them what they're doing in terms of testing, as well as on the maintenance records that they haven't been maintaining. If they're looking at the filter changeout vis a vis the manufacturer specification. And I think those are interesting questions, and if that's what creates success, that would obviously be something we would ask the state to be watching for, for all of our customers, not just this customer. In terms of odor, though, I think we really have to sort, stay in our lane on odor. I'd be hesitant for us to start getting into NDEP's territory on air quality. That's really not our expertise. But I think we can work with our state agencies to address those issues.
And Hope, when you speak to NDEP, can you also ask them about if they have responded or not responded to the submission of the new equipment design? I'd like to hear from them.
And I do have a tiny bit of information on that. The NDEP staff did advise that when this revision came in on Monday, they were open to looking at new pieces of equipment, and that could have been included, and it was not included. Now, they may have overlooked the fact that the filters had been changed when they answered my question, but I can certainly talk to them about how they're handling this particular Carson City business vis a vis new equipment.
So let me clarify with you, Jeremy. When was the information on the new equipment submitted to NDEP? Was it as part of the NDOT permit application this last Monday, or was it previous? Because my understanding was that it was a previous timeframe.
Your understanding is correct. It was a previous email sent to NDEP regarding a piece of blue smoke filter that NDEP, or I'm sorry, that TWA located in Tennessee that they were going to purchase and have it shipped here to Carson City. So when they got the lead on the blue smoke filter, they sent the equipment to the NDEP for preliminary review and discussion, and never heard back from them. So it was not part of the air quality permit as a proposed piece of new equipment, because we never got that far.
All right. Thank you. So Hope, that's my question. Okay. Go ahead.
I mean, I don't know if Hope or Jeremy know the answer to this. Does, I mean, I can see where NDEP would be reluctant to be the ones to tell you, or tell TWA, that a given piece of equipment is going to work the way that you think or want it to work. I could, I mean, I don't know that that's something they do to model something that is going to benefit the community and your business. So it seems to, and I don't know this, maybe they do that routinely, but I could see where they would be reluctant to do that for fear of saying to you, "Yeah, go ahead and use that. You're fine with it, and it doesn't perform the way it's expected to perform." So, I mean, it seems to me that it would be TWA's responsibility to hire an engineer or the manufacturer to provide data that says, "This blue smoke product will do the following, and this, you know, this is the level it will perform to." And then NDEP can say, "Okay, we'll permit that based on the information that you submitted, and your permit is that this has to operate the way that you're saying it's going to operate." So I'm a bit confused by the fact that TWA has submitted this to NDEP, if I'm understanding you correctly, and almost asking them to say, "Yeah, go ahead and use that. It'll work." Maybe a misunderstanding that.
And Supervisor, Jeremy, I believe you are misunderstanding that we were seeking preliminary approval and discussions to move forward with getting modeling done for that. NDEP takes all their pieces of equipment and does in-house modeling to determine whether they are going to permit the proposed equipment or proposed modifications to a hot asphalt plant. So what we weren't looking for them to say, "Yes, go ahead and buy it. We're going to approve it." What we were looking for was preliminary discussions to say, "Yes, conceivably, that could work. Let's move forward with the process." At that point, TWA would have done their own research into seeing if that would have a positive impact on the air quality issues that the NDEP governs. But we were not looking for them to give us approval via email to purchase the equipment.
Any additional questions? John? No? All right. Thank you, Jeremy. This is, no action is required on this. So thank you for making yourself available, and we will see you back at the Planning Commission in October.
Okay. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you. Okay, we are now on Agenda Item 16, non-action items, future agenda items, status review of projects, internal communications, correspondence, status reports, and staff comments. Nancy, you have anything for us?
I think Stephanie is going to go over some things.
Thank you. Stephanie Hicks, Deputy City Manager, for the record. I just wanted to report on a few pieces, I think, of great news for the city. As of yesterday, the 19th of August, on the state's COVID-19 county tracker, we were not flagged for, well, we were flagged for one, but not more than one elevated disease transmission. So that means that we've stayed off of the list for the action plans and assessments. So that's great news. We also were, well, I should say, our Carson City businesses were praised by the governor's office. For the week of August 10, OSHA went out and did inspections, and the businesses that they visited were they visited were in, um, 100% in compliance. So that was great news. I also wanted to, um, give a congratulations to Parks and Open Space Department. Their Homestead Holidays Event was recognized with a Program Excellence Award from the Nevada Recreation and Parks Society. So they, um, acknowledged that that was a great event for the community. Unfortunately, due to COVID, it won't be held this year, but we do look forward to future events out at Silver Saddle Ranch for, um, Homestead Holidays. And then lastly, I just wanted to let you know, I do have copies of the, um, most updated Sierra Room conceptual plans, if anybody would like to look at that during the break. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Nancy, did you have anything to add?
No.
John, you have any reports?
Uh, the Airport Authority met, um, at a distance last night and, uh, we discussed, um, uh, the effort to get night flights in here. Uh, at some point in time, we're proceeding with that and also a, a marketing idea that would, uh, do reappraisals and, and, uh, move forward to see and if we can market for more, um, economic development. That's it.
Yeah, just, uh, briefly report on the CTA meeting. Uh, it wasn't a lengthy meeting, but, um, we, um, did talk about the success of the rollout of the rail bikes, which I think some of you participated in. Um, talked, uh, a lot about the potentials, um, for what we can do with that in terms of, of, uh, of moving forward with, um, you know, even night trips or, or trips back across the, uh, the bridge. Um, but, but for now, trips into the canyon, going about 50 minutes to an hour apiece. Uh, got a chance to ride the rail bikes. They're, uh, well-built, they were constructed for our rails, um, and, uh, really a great recreational opportunity. Um, so I, I, I don't know that they're sold out, but I know that they're very busy. So, um, I'd recommend you get over there. Also, moving forward on the Kid Carson Trail, the redevelopment of that Kid Carson Trail with the markers, uh, CTA is working with Silver State Industries and, uh, some redevelopment funds that this board, the redevelopment board provided. Um, so hopefully by the end of the year, those will be in place and the Kid Carson Trail will be back up and running, um, finally. Um, I think that's it for me. Yeah, uh, we had a water subconservancy, uh, meeting last night. Um, had a, uh, presentation on, uh, South Lyon County's, um, flood, uh, it's not South Lyon, well, I guess it is. Yeah, they're, they're, uh, South Dayton, that, thank you, South Dayton, uh, flood stream, but also, uh, we approved the submission of Carson Water Subconservancy's Hazard Mitigation Plan. It'll be the first time that CWSD has submitted a hazard mitigation plan, which is required for each county, um, and, and some cities within the state. Uh, but the CWSD is, uh, unique in that it doesn't really have any governing authority. So, uh, it's tagging on Destroy County's Hazard Mitigation Plan, but it does, uh, open up the opportunity for CWSD to apply for grants that can then be used to help do pre or post disaster mitigation, uh, work within the, the, uh, CWSD, uh, uh, county region. Um, we did not get a water report last night. I think that's pretty much it. Am I missing anything?
Just the, uh, water trail grant application?
Oh, yeah. Uh, we just applied for a water trail grant application through CWSD. This would, as you know, the aquatic trail, um, essentially, uh, the two components of it are mostly in Carson City and down towards, uh, Dayton, but this would add, uh, the aquatic trail from Cradle Bar to Mexican Dam. It will, uh, allow for improvements for a put-in at Cradle Bar Bridge, some parking lot improvements, um, a take-out at Mexican Ditch, or excuse me, Mexican Dam, and then, uh, a trail that would allow for a walk-around Mexican Dam and a reinsertion on the other side of Mexican Dam, and then a take-out at Santa Maria Ranch. So I think we have a good shot at that grant if we get it. It would essentially create an aquatic trail from Cradle Bar Bridge all the way to Santa Maria Ranch in Dayton. Um, and, um, as you know, Carson City has several, uh, put-in and take-out spots already, so it would be in line with all of that. So, thanks, Brett.
One, I just want to congratulate all women. We had 100-year celebration of our right to vote on August 18th, so just want to do a shout out for that. And then at our Park and Rec meeting the other night, we, and the Open Space also, approved a new fee structure and for the first time, we, um, are recommending to this board, uh, we increased the fees by 10% to be able to fund our first component of asset management. So you'll be seeing that come forward and that was a unanimous vote by both boards to participate and begin to do the asset management. Um, so I was really pleased with that and you'll be seeing that shortly.
All right. Thank you all for your reports. You have anything to add, Dan? No? All right. We're doing good this morning. So we are now, uh, set to recess for lunch. So we will be in recess until 1:30 PM when we will be back to look at appointment of four members to the, uh, CTA. Thank you. See you back at 1:30.